This meeting to order. Roll call please. Carrier, Iden, Jones, Mazur, and Better.
Here.
All present. Welcome to all the visitors. Hello there, Boy Scouts again. Nice to see you. And we will stand for the pledge. We have to say this one right for that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You guys are getting much better on that pledge. No pause there. It's getting much better.
I still fall.
I still fall still.
It was an A. You guys are pretty good.
Alright, so we have the proclamation and... Never done this before.
There's a couple of them.
So should I read them or do we motion first after having read through them already? Because I've never done it this week before.
I think you motion first.
Alright, so I need a motion.
A motion.
And a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Minda. Recommend to approve the following proclamation. Whereas APT Manufacturing Solutions has completed the 2016-2017 school year as an off-site educational facility for students interested in pursuing a future in manufacturing and engineering, whereas it is especially desirous at this time to publicly express the appreciation of the Hicksville Administration and Board of Education and commend APT Manufacturing Solutions and their employees, their continued contribution to the Hicksville students involved in their program, whereas it is proper and fitting to accord official recognition to this corporation for their outstanding community service to the students at Hicksville High School. Now therefore, we as the administration and members of the Hicksville Exempted Village Schools Board of Education issue this proclamation as a tribute of appreciation from the entire Hicksville Exempted Village School District. In witness thereof, we have here on two subscribed our names and have properly entered this resolution into the minutes of the Hicksville Exempted Village Schools Board of Education meeting the 7th day of June 2017. Discussion.
We're just really grateful for that program with APT and I thought this would be a great way to recognize them.
Roll call please. Carrier, yes. Iden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mazur?
Yes.
And Better?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero. And second proclamation. Whereas Michael Myers and Madison Sebenawa have completed the 2016-2017 season by qualifying for the state track meet and whereas it is especially desirous at this time to publicly express the appreciation of the Hicksville Administration and Board of Education and commend these athletes and their coaches for this fine achievement and whereas it is proper and fitting to accord official recognition to these athletes and coaching staff for this outstanding example of what dedication and talent can accomplish. Now therefore, we as the administration and members of the Hicksville Exempted Village Schools Board of Education issue this proclamation as a tribute of appreciation from the entire Hicksville Exempted Village School District and urge our citizenry to approve and support those events that honor these fine young adults and the coaches for bringing recognition and honor to the Hicksville Exempted Village School District. In witness thereof, we have here on two subscribed our names and have properly entered this resolution into the minutes of the Hicksville Exempted Village Schools Board of Education meeting the 7th day of June 2017. Discussion. It was really nice to see them do so well.
Agreed.
Sports all around this year doing very well.
Yep. And those proclamations actually are not the evidence that we can all finish. We'll get your signature.
Agreed.
And we want to wish Madison the best of luck. He's at the university. Should we throw a disc there?
And Hammer, and Shot, and Jeff.
And shot all the field events, yes. And then of course, Michael, he's only a sophomore, so he'll be back for two more years to hopefully be at that level, so.
And honestly, has a good chance of moving on across country too.
Yes. He was a little injured from the year in cross-country, I believe.
He was.
Shakeslants and something else.
Well, he missed one on by one place in a tenth of a second, so. Roll call please. Carrier, yes. Iden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mazur?
Yes.
Better?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero. Principal reports. High school first, please.
May is a busy, busy month in the high school, so I'm just going to hit you with some of the things that... For the highlights, I guess, of May for us. May 12th, our district art show took place in the Thomas and Mr. Stevenson, Mr. Gagin doing a phenomenal job with that. It was very nice and a nice job, so thank you for all their efforts. May 16th, our seniors participated in the first ever Dominion Cup with Paulding. They're also doing the kind of a house initiative, so we kind of got together and our seniors competed for a cup that would go back and forth between two schools. It was a really neat experience. The kids were really into it all day long. We ended up losing on a tiebreaker at the end, but it was a great experience, so thank you for Paulding for setting that up for us. May 16th, that was in 16th. May 18th, our juniors and seniors participated in the Rock Crash, Robbed the Defiance, Spied the Defiance, Drunk Free Coalition. It was a great educational experience for all of us apart. May 19th was our winning house celebration that took place at Laser X and as well at the Park of Town, so congratulations to Exemplar for their big win this year. I look for Amish about to bag next year. May 24th was our senior awards banquet took place. The Hicksville High School seniors have awarded $1.28 million in scholarships this year, so congratulations to all of those kids. Tremendous accomplishment. Obviously reflects very well on all of us and we look forward to what they do in the future. May 31st was the last day of school for students this year. We hope students and staff enjoy a safe and relaxing summer vacation and look forward to seeing you all back in August. June 1st and 2nd was the state track meet that we kind of talked about. Congratulations to Mr. Myers and Mrs. Sebenauer on their respective sport seasons. And then June 4th, we had our commencement exercises that took place and we're proud of all 72 seniors who were able to meet all of the requirements and walk this year for graduation.
And to talk about commencement. I know coming to Hicksville as the high school principal, I've experienced commencement at Eastside High School and two other schools and it's a lot of work. We kind of do it a little bit different than most other school districts. And I'll admit, every, I'd say, February, March, when we start the process, you know, we kind of question, you know, the assigning for parents, the assigning for grandparents, the way we march them in, the seating charts, diploma charts, everything that we do, it makes it special. And then hearing from other people, Craig Iden approached me a week ago, two weeks ago, mentioned he was at Wayne Traces. Oh, I shouldn't have said that. Darn. Another commencement exercise and he talked about how much he really enjoyed ours or preferred ours. I had a few other individuals make the same comment. I had a few residents of Hicksville approach me after our commencement and said the same thing, that ours is really special. We do a really nice job with it. So it makes it worth that time, worth that effort, and again, we're always looking to improve it. But I really need to throw a shout out to Tara Welling. You know, one thing that we've done in the office, and I want to thank, you know, Mr. Hunter for this and of course, the whole athlete team, is, you know, this whole transition for Google Docs and the way we gather information and collect it and then disperse it and analyze it. It's really helped out. It's made us much more efficient. And we've also looked into the Red Track system and collecting funds and then the monies that come through the office. It's making us more efficient and of course, Mrs. Welling has been able to assist us to do more secretarial for the office staff rather than just busy work collecting monies and doing some other things. So she put a ton of time and effort into that. I want to make sure everybody knows that if it was for Mrs. Welling, you know, we wouldn't be able to put that show on, and that's just a fact. So we really appreciate Mrs. Welling, of course, everyone else that plays a role in that. I'm going to hit on a few future events here. First off, all parents can do their students' back-to-school forms online on the school website. If you have any questions about how to access that information, again, go to the school website. There's a ticker that's running across the top. Click on that. All the information you need is there. If you're still having issues, please call the office. We'll be more than willing to help out. June 12th through the 17th, we have the HHS marching band going to Hollywood this spring, so we hope they have a great trip there. Summer school. Parents should be receiving flyers for high school credit recovery program. We have about 24 senior, or 24 CBE students that have been encouraged to attend for a little credit recovery. The program itself will run from June 12th to June 22nd for session one and then July 10th through July 20th for session two. The cost is $60 per half-credit hour course and Mr. Lawrence will be in charge of that using our HDLC program or Gradpoint, which is an online remediation courses that we purchased through that company. It actually runs through Bayard High School, I believe, through our contracts with. So I hope that the kids take advantage of this, because if they do take advantage of this, they don't have to worry about losing study halls or losing, or having to double up in math classes, double up in English classes throughout the year. So again, that's coming your way. The middle school, summer school, we're going to be transitioning that a little bit. We lost Mrs. Bostleman. She used to be middle school summer school all the time. She is now, of course, the high school volleyball coach and considering middle school summer schools in August. All their two-day practices, everything are in August. It's just not going to happen. And then we had another teacher kind of stepped out from the position of summer school. We have a little bit of interest from another teacher about participating in the program. We're probably looking into going into, again, the remediation piece and using the HDLC, so it's very content-specific for our middle school students. And that way, any student that is mandatory must attend or is highly recommended to attend and they do, we can actually assign specific content areas to them and then we'll have a facilitator in that program. In the past, the way it's been handled is we typically had a math teacher and we had an English teacher and they would go over all the content in a two-week period, but I'm thinking we're going to transition from that. And again, that program, we have to have teacher volunteers to do that. So consider if teacher volunteers are down, because it was a long year. I mean, any teacher will tell you with the short-cycle assessments, the testing, the OTES, everything. Some of them just, they need to step back a little bit, and that's okay. But we're going to transition potentially into a different middle school, again, summer school program, but we'll get through that. ACT review, that's been offered, I think, the last four or five years here at Hicksville. Again, some of the teachers have done in the past. They prefer not to do that this summer. So we did not have any interest in teachers offering up that opportunity this year. I know Mrs. Jones and I have spoken about some other opportunities and that has been discussed again. So I'm not sure exactly how we're going to handle that, but I know that the junior ACT required tests that all juniors must take, that's kind of also made teachers rethink offering the ACT review, because technically that was for incoming seniors. For the first time they're taking their ACT, we typically take the ACT review. Well, now they have to take it their junior year at school during the school year, okay? And so we're going to kind of probably look into revamping that program also. And then one last thing I'd like to talk about before I have any questions. I want to recognize this letter I received here from Riley's Hospital. We have this really nice plaque here that we received, and I'm going to read the first few paragraphs from this letter. We need to adjust to what this is about. This pertains to Mianna Missouri's senior project. It says, "Dear Mr. Slattery, on behalf of Riley's Hospital for Children, thank you for your school's communities' generous $1,500 gift supporting Mianna Missouri's senior project and benefiting pediatric medical research efforts at the hospital. Students moving into action on behalf of others makes a powerful statement to the families who turn to Riley for hope and healing for their sick and injured children. Your school family's participation in the Kids Carrying and Sharing Program creates a new goal for children today and tomorrow. The KCS program is an important funding source for Riley's research, which is helping children like Katie from Evansville and said a bunch of other creation about that person. I'm not going to say it." So that was a letter directly from Riley's to Mianna about the programs she put on, the funds she raised and how it directly affected a specific person at the pediatric hospital. We're really proud of what Mianna did, and it was a huge effort, and we're looking forward to hanging up this plaque here at the school. So thank you, Mianna, for all your efforts. That's all we got.
So did you figure out what's wrong with the microphone?
Yeah, I believe Eric Bassett. I told him next year, we can hardwire a mic. I recommend it from this point on that we always hardwire it. That way we don't have that interference issue. I don't know what to say about it, so.
Yeah.
It worked out.
It did, yeah. More of an annoyance, you know, I mean, on your part, probably.
You press your train.
I'd like to comment on the school registration form issue. So when the text messaging alert went out, I tried to get on. I'm trying to get on.
Everyone's down.
Okay, I thought there's probably just a lot of people getting on. So I tried a couple days later and I was able to get on and get it done so quick and it's so nice. And I just really appreciate, as a parent, not having to fill out the same forms over and over and over again.
And we get 50 comments like that. It's already one complaint now. So it is, it's a great program. I really appreciate Shaker's efforts in getting that streamlined for all of us, because Riley has three students in the school. It's awesome. It really is.
Few more weeks, I'll start getting a call every week.
I'm done. No, I tried today, but my internet was still at home.
And you know, not to prolong this, but the Red Track system, and I know like the elementary school side of the building and our side of the building, we have field trips. Our field trips in our end of building, a lot of times are like you're watching ABC, you're New York City, and it's unfortunate that some of our teachers get in a position where kids show up and give them $3,000 in one day. And that's, I don't want to hold $3,000 during the day, have to go pay in form and everything. We're really pushing that Red Track system this year to get that money out of the hands of the teachers. And I've been, of course, using it, because I have a daughter that's going to be in eighth grade next year going on field trip. And once you get that account set up, it's very convenient. Again, it's, I'm just like any other parent. It's the unknowing of how to get there and, you know, transitioning from one page to the next and selecting the right, you know, lengths and everything. But once you get used to it, I mean, it's very convenient for a bunch of accounts, everything. So again, I highly advise all parents to take advantage of that system.
Any other questions for Mr. Slattery or Mr. Hunter? Alright, elementary.
Well, just as the high school May was a very busy month for us as well. As Travis said, the first day of May, it's May, Kirsten. It's May. And it flew by quickly. Yeah, May 12th was our district arts festival, but on top of that, in the morning, we also had our senior citizens being with. We had roughly about 80 individuals attend that. Our sixth grade team and Emily Reese spoke to them as they had spoken to us. That's what they shared, to share with them some of the fun and creative things that we're doing in our classrooms. Elementary student council members met our guests at the door, accompanied them down to the tables, where then our high school student council members met and engaged in conversation down there. And our elementary student council also served the food, so I really feel that Hicksville represented us well that day. On May 19th, we did have our house celebration, and I just wanted to put a big thank you out to our committee members that put together such great assemblies this year. We had great assemblies that really focused on team-building and the kids were excited. And I heard, I got to go to the house celebration, because I am exemplar. Just you. Just me. It was a lot of fun. Heard a lot of positive comments. The kids were excited. I mean, just what a great way to get kids excited about education. The last few days of school were spent with Ms. Mann conducting many awards ceremonies. Last year was the first year that she invited parents and encouraged parents to come. We had a great turnout. We did a K3 assembly and a 4-6 assembly. We also had our Fund in the Sun, our reading incentive for the kids meeting that goal. So great job to the kiddos. We did do meet the teacher on the last day of school. Adorable.
Smashing success.
Oh my golly. The kids, they were all dressed up. Some of them were all dressed up and just so excited to meet their teacher for the next year. I had one little kiddo that had probably, she was probably this big, but with an adult medium-sized fluffy jacket on that she, you know, took the zipper down to show me her outfit underneath. That was probably an outfit for a little three-year-old, but I mean, that was her favorite dress. I mean, she was just ecstatic that she was going to get to meet her teacher and she had her favorite outfit on. So the teacher spent about 30 minutes with their next year's class, and I mean, just like I said, the kiddos were just ecstatic.
I think Mr. Reese is going to talk about Hicksville Shake a little.
Yeah, in case you didn't hear, we had the fourth annual Hicksville Shake the week of, so we had May 23rd, 24th. And, you know, a lot of various schools are doing this now and we kind of made the conscious decision after last year to go a little bigger and better this year. And I think what we did was awesome, and I think our kids stepped it up too. So I'll talk about, a little bit more about the process here in a minute, but behind the scenes, there are, oh my gosh, a million people working behind the scenes to help put this together and there are so many moving parts, but I'm afraid to name, try to name them. It's awful to get some, but thank you to everybody for the help with that. Panels of judges, we had a lot of local people, we had some people from the Fort Wayne area help us out. Our teachers, I will mention them, Mrs. Deal, Mr. Pharoah, Mrs. Carrickson, Mr. Purnan, and Mrs. Taylor. How our kids so well-prepared and our judges just raved about the performance and the job they did during the shake. You know, I always kind of jokingly say we put them through a meat grinder, but we really do. I mean, for their own benefit, of course, and then prepared for everything they encounter. But first round, of course, was here at school with five judges from area businesses and things and I gave them prompts and kids go around, interact with each one. As a total points competition, so the higher the score from these judges, the better the kids do. So we had a top 10 that was constantly changing. So we started giving kids through our top 10, so it's a quick transition from round one to round two. And one would come through and knock one down by a point or two, just constant, constant, constant. I mean, the first, the top 15 kids were, were all within maybe 20 points or something like that. And from nine to 17, we're all just a few points apart, so really close. So proud of all our kids, not just the ones in advance, but proud of all our kids and we hope these skills carry on with them. Round two, we did the same day on the 23rd, went down to the hospital. I know Mrs. Jones, she served as a judge there, and the kids did a multimedia presentation to kind of set up like this, that we're in a room like this. They've worked on that here at school and they had practiced their presentations. And I, the difference from last, nothing against last year's kids, but the difference between this year, last year's presentations and this year, I think noticeable, like we got a little better here at what we did and we had some, maybe some teaching points to help the kids out. Took 10 students down there, came back to school, we announced in front of the whole sixth grade, we announced the top five. Did you have anything on the second round at all to add?
It was wonderful.
Good experience, yeah. And again, the judges, I thought, really were impressed with our kids.
And I love that you split up for two days. That really helped.
It made it easier on us. It probably made it tougher on the top five. And we announced the top five and we had the teachers contact their parents, let them know they're moving on. So the next day, we lined up the sidewalk out here, brought them down, put them in a limo, and they didn't know where they were going, but we went to the Grand Wayne Center. We had a whole nother set of judges, including someone from the local news station.
Travis, save the news.
Oh my gosh. I still mumbled my way through a TV interview. It was atrocious. Should have put one of the kids up, but anyway. So there, they did like a meet and greet, like a social hour type thing, where they had to walk around and interact with, we probably had 13, 14 judges or so. And of course, the judges had score and records and things, with some points to watch. And then we did, we would interrupt that into a minute to win, so I'd say, you know, Keith, you've got a minute to win and here's your topic. And we had five prompts and I'd give them one and he'd just have to introduce himself and speak in front of this whole big crowd. And we did a formal dinner, again, in the middle, like in the fishbowl, they're in the middle of all the judges and stuff. When we were done, then the judges and Keith and Mrs. Coffin and I all together talked and came up with our, you know, how we ranked the top five. So we brought them back to elementary, why the kids ended up, they got back, we put them back in the limo. Who won? Who won? We're not telling you. So brought them back and now in front of the whole elementary school and really cool. Big thanks to the Hicksville Bank for funding the Grand Wayne Center experience, the dinner and things like that up there and... Nope. Okay. And then the Country or Community Memorial Hospital, one of the things we did this year a little different. We wanted to give them a prize, but I didn't want it to be stuff. I didn't want it to be a device or something like that. So we actually came up with the idea, we're doing a starter account for them, like tuition starter account that the parents can keep contributing to and stuff. So thanks to the Community Memorial Hospital, they are kicking in that startup amount of $250 to help them, it's going to be Katie Jack, Katie, and they're winning. Joseph Freeze got runner-up, and the plan is to send both of them to RCA in February to compete in the national amazing shake. So I wouldn't count either of those two out. I can just tell you that. They're tiny, but mighty. They're pretty awesome. So again, proud of all of our kids.
Can I say something on top of all?
Sure.
What was neat is we also invited Mrs. Leone to be a judge, so she could, you know, connect it with her, what she does at the high school level, and she was so impressed with our top five that she took the top five over to the high school and actually did a minute to win it with her high school kids and then put them up against our sixth grade kids, and they were like, oh.
That's very impressive. The fifth grade, or the sixth grade kids were not in there and she gave the prompts, same prompt, you know, so they did it with the high school first, and I watched. It was pretty interesting. And then she brought those sixth graders in and they did it, and they're like, hey. It's pretty impressive. Proud of them.
That actually, I was, while I was sitting here listening to you, so when do our, like, our first year shakes?
I was just going to say that. So our first shakers, if you will, just going to serve freshman year, so they'll be stopped for next year. And it was kind of cool at the assembly. We had, so Janice Green won the initial in awkward shake. And then the second year was Kennedy Phillips and then Emily Taylor. So we brought those three girls back. Another rule won this year, but our guys got to pick it up a little bit.
We had our boys.
I'm really interested to hear how sophomores do next year. I think it's going to be a good review, because I think, you know, now that they've been through this review, I think you're going to see a big update in performance there and kind of confidence that they carry themselves with, so it should be really good.
You know, they mentioned the bank and the hospital. The bank paid for the meal, which was a very substantial amount of worth of Grand Wayne for that number of people, so we're really, really thankful for them. The other money spent from that all comes from our Hicksville Initiative account, which the PTO started up for us a few years ago. And so we have that money in there and then we do some things along the way. I sell all the pictures in the building at the start of each year, throw that money in there to kind of keep putting that in there, because that, and some shirts we sell to, because we can't use general fund money for any of that stuff. So we do that through donations and a little fundraising that we do, so just so you know that. A big thanks to the bank for the $650 they paid for us and the hospital for the $250.
They want this to be sustainable. That's, you know, you don't want to have to take a step back because we can't sustain yet for financials.
Right, and like when we take the kids to Atlanta, we'll have to find different funding for that as well, so.
Just a couple more thank yous. First of all, our, all the administrative team, because while we were out running around, they were holding things down, our office staff, all of our judges that, of course, then our scoring team that helped with all of the corporate things. Mr. Hoffman ran all the techy stuff, I guess, and one of the cool things we did was this year we posted everything to Facebook videos and photos. Got 100, 300 pictures probably on Facebook on our school account. And Matt told them when I got back after the first day, like, we had like 26 or 27 kids on that thing. I think that's good. I'm not a Facebook guy, but it's very comparable with our highest days ever of people accessing our accounts online. So that's one of the things we wanted to do, is kind of get the word out, all the great things that our kids are doing. They got the Facebook and the Twitter and things like that. Have been a good tool for us to kind of spread the word and let everybody know what's going on. That was mine. Any more questions or comments on the Shake a while?
I love the kids, their personalities. They were prepared enough. I don't want to say necessarily relaxed enough, but likely responded with humor sometimes and just, I mean...
They were comfortable.
It was great.
They could do this right here. They could come right. They could read a board report. I have no doubt.
Those top 10, I mean, I'm sure the others were that close too, but really, that was super impressive.
And you know, one of the things that I always do is before they come in for their second round, I'll always go up and I'll go get them and kind of walk them, and I feel like I have to try to calm them down. I have to. Like, good? Like, yeah, I got this. Alright. Without fail, all of them are just like, yeah, I'm ready. Alright. Without fail, all of them are just like, yeah, I'm ready, alright. You know, I told them how the room was set up, all of this, and I kind of told them how to enter, you know, where to start shaking hands, but I said, you got this, yeah, I'm ready. They're more excited to get in than nervous, which is a really good indication, I think. So, I wish I could be a little mouse to everyone, tell them, watch those kids' first ever job interview, because they're a good candidate, so. It was really good.
Good job, by the way.
Thanks.
Lots of prep, good job.
So, from a, well, kindergarten jumpstart camp, thanks to United Way and the Women's Giving Circle. Again, we're gonna host kindergarten jumpstart camp here in mid-August, and that pays for teacher expenses, that pays for classroom aid expense, pays for supplies, pays for lunches, transportation, it's all paid for for us. So, if you don't remember from last year, that's fine. We invite kids that may be identified as, I don't want to say at risk, but can benefit from an extra week here at school before everyone gets here and it gets a little crazy. So we've, this year, we're actually gonna outfit two classrooms instead of just one. So we've got a list of twenty-seven kids, and actually those are going to go out tomorrow. So we've got twenty-seven kids that we're reaching out to, parents already know it's coming, but they're gonna come in and spend kindergarten days with us from nine to two for a whole week. They're gonna go to cafeteria, they go to gym, they do, you know, numeracy and literacy things in the classroom, they go through mercurial routines, lining up, things like that. So when they get here, they kind of know what to expect and kind of ease that anxiety a little bit, and hopefully enhance, you know, increase their chance at success right away. And again, a big thank you, you know, to Carrie Westine, she's the United Way Director in Falls County, and all the people involved with that, because it's just a tremendous deal, the donors that step up every year and fund this, it's really, it's awesome to see those kids here, and, you know, we couldn't do without the help of those programs. And that's a really positive note, this one really is not, I'm gonna say anyways, because that's my job. So, you're probably somewhat familiar with the whole federal funding piece, Title I, Title II-A, things like that, it's federal money and it's based on population, okay? Whereas we are a building-wide, Title I building, because our reduced, our free reduced lunch rate is four percent or higher, so any student in this building can benefit from Title I funds, okay? Every so often, I, for lack of a better term, the feds recalibrate that, and I told Keith that it's, my understanding is kind of like electoral votes, you know, based on population, I think. And the census bureau said that Ohio has lost X number of students, so they lose X number of dollars from federal funding to get redistributed to the state, okay? So Ohio, as a state, is losing nineteen million dollars in federal funding this year, which is big, because we are losing forty thousand, forty thousand dollars. We just got our allocation today, which, our allocation for Title I last year without the carryover was right around a hundred ninety thousand, I did check on this today, right around a hundred eighty-nine, a hundred eighty, ninety thousand. This year, we're only getting a hundred and fifty thousand, which is substantial, it's unbelievable, the amount of stuff we cram into that budget to be paid for in a list without that. Online subscriptions to math, anything that has to do with math and reading can be paid for, title funds, personnel costs, so that's, we're gonna have to be creative, and, you know, I've already introduced Mrs. Kaufman to the wonderful world of the CCIP, which is a plan to put this all together, kind of passing it to her, and she's really likely to do that. No, it'll be alright, but that forty-five, I said, if it hit forty grand, it's kind of swelling a little bit.
I'm wondering about my budget.
Yeah, and just one last note for me, I know I've talked a while, I want to give Jeff. The handbooks from the elementary side are not on the agenda this month, because, well, I'm not gonna be here, I'm not gonna be the one that has to live with them. So, we have been working on them, and they're pretty much done, but I didn't want to get that requirement, requirement, it's still being done, it's the one we're gonna use this year, so. There, get a couple other things.
Just that Travis and I will be in the office until the end of June. We have, so far, our next year's special schedules are completed, our online subscriptions are being proposed, we're updating the staff and student handbooks, and we have also like finalized the student fees, and so we are able to stay with the fifty, fifty-five dollar student fee for this year as well.
Two or three years from now.
Yeah.
And that is for, so the kids, you were trying to say? Okay, you got it?
I think so.
By the way, I would assume most kids are the same way, but my kids love finding out who their teacher was next year.
Awesome. We all love it.
It was such a.
Parents and stuff, we got a lot of positive feedback.
Plus all the trips, and I'm not gonna have to come up to the school to say it's posted, yeah.
And we don't have to post it, we can put it.
But I, you know, I think there's some anxiety for kids, you know, who their teacher's gonna be, and you know what, now it's, you know, it's gone, so I mean, I really think it's.
It was just wonderful to watch.
Bad fun for myself, so it should be, should pay off well next year. Wow, we're finally done.
Any other questions for the elementary administration? Thank you very much. So, Mr. Better, Debbie Fort Hunter.
I left all my paper clippings on the table as I walked out, so I asked Jeff to help me here a little bit. But I'll start off with, we first ratified a three-year contract with a special meeting last week, and negotiations was like half a day, and everything went very smooth, and ratified a new contract, and so that's all done behind us. Still trying to figure out how we're gonna do the money for the replacement of the air-conditioning units that we've discussed before, trying to figure out how we're gonna fund those and do those. Secondly, the, we've talked about this several times in the past, the cafeteria account is slighting the red pretty hard this year, so trying to figure out what can be done to help that. There's a lot of factors into it, a factor into why some are controlled, can be controlled, some cannot be controlled. So, trying to figure out what to do, why that could really cost the Ford County District. It was a hundred K here, now it's, now it's, it was down to above even, and this year I think we'll be about forty K over again.
Are the kids allowed to leave school to eat, or do they have to eat there?
No, no, no.
So they can pack, can they?
They could pack, it's hard gauging how many lunches they're gonna have, there was a fair amount of delays there in the springtime too, which affected the lunches. And so, there are, there's a lot of factors, and like I said, some are controllable, some are not, beyond the school, so. But that's still something we're trying to get our handles on. I mean, John was, John was, you know, really grabbed a hold of that when he was on, over there, and it's still something that we're trying to get our handle on a little bit. We also had the regional competition at Archibald, at Ford County, for the other career centers, and that went over very well. In fact, they were very excited to host it again, a lot of work went into that, but went over very well. And then there was the national competition for career centers. And Miss Feller from Hicksville placed high in the competition nationally, and she was the only Hicksville student that placed nationally, and I don't recall what place her team was in. At the end, I apologize to her for that, not having that look through tonight. And then the, again, out of the IT department, the business department, a gentleman there, and I don't recall which school he took, he was in the top ten, and it was two years ago, a student from there won nationally and got a full MIT scholarship at MIT, so that program's had a lot of success there. So that's all I have.
Thank you.
Sure. When I spoke with Eric, to give a question or answer for your question on the camera, so, they're gonna start the camera installation next week with a new camera system, it should take about five to six weeks, so that'll be completing that after July one, which is when we'll be paying the balance, we paid part in January. So that'll be getting started next week. The land at the old elementary has been surveyed. I don't have a survey in hand, but it has finally been completed. There are three lots that'll be approximately eighty-five feet by a hundred and eighty-five, a hundred and ninety feet deep, they're all the same size. I have been contacted by a few people of interest that are interested in it, and what I've told all of them is that we're not gonna do anything till we get the survey back, and then the board will sit down and discuss what they're gonna do, if, when, how, you're gonna sell it, will all be determined at a later date. We're not rushing, correct them when I'm staying here on everything, what your wishes are, and, you know, not promising anybody anything at this point, I said, right now, we just need to get the survey back, and then we'll have another discussion as we do the next steps. Thanks from the teachers for both the teacher appreciation that you did for them after all the testing, the meal, they really appreciated that, as well as the end-of-year picnic, that was both great. I know the guys and gal already touched about the art, district art show, but I just wanted to say that, you know, for Joey and Chris, what they do for that is pretty phenomenal, and, you know, it's not thrown together, it's a class act, and a lot of help from everybody here putting that on. There were a lot of community members, grandparents and community members, parents that come out and just look, and the work our kids are doing is amazing, so.
There was a lot of people.
Yeah.
I mean, it was packed up the whole way, welcome back.
Yeah, it was.
They worked out the whole year.
Yes.
Stating back projects, marking things that he wants to say, you know, his after-order.
But, for example, though, you know, Jen, when Jen Hopps was here, she started Art Sonya, you might be familiar with that, where the kids post artwork and she would take pictures of all the artwork and upload it, and for every kid, to make sure every kid had something on there. Well, Chris has kept up with that, and that does give some funding for him, for his art program. But now, he had gotten some iPads here a while back, was that, when was that?
It was just our last year.
From the foundation?
Foundation grant, yeah.
Yeah, and, and he's done great things with those iPads in the classroom for art technologically. And so he was saying, oh, it would really be nice though if I had ten more, because, you know, then I could do a whole class, because right now they have to share. I said, write another grant. I said, the foundation has some money yet that they're wanting to give, you know, they want to give to people for projects like this. So he did, and we're in the process of voting on that right now, the foundation members, but last time I checked, it was looking good for Chris, that he'll get another ten. And why I say this is because what he does now is, all the kids take a picture of their own artwork, and they all know how to upload it themselves and get it on there. And the amount of time that that saves Chris to prepare lessons and other things is huge, so if he gets this, he's gonna be really, really thankful, not just for that purpose, but then kids won't have to share when they're doing different things, so. Great shout out to the foundation for that, and to Joey and Chris for all they do to get that show put together, because it's a big deal. And then the custodians are obviously already starting with their summer cleaning, they have been into the rooms, you know, start to empty some of them out. And Eric also wanted me to mention that we have, he and I have a meeting tomorrow with some, I don't know, contractors, roofing people. The roof is fixed, we're waiting on rain, it's down to two, but they're pretty confident that they have it taken care of, it's in the big gym area, so we just need a terrain out to double check, but it looks like we're in really good shape. So, the meeting tomorrow is to talk about any potential future problems, where do we go from here, and just kind of get them together and have that discussion, so Eric's doing that tomorrow, Eric and I are meeting with them in the morning. And then also, I forgot to mention, but Jeff, you know how we sell back our computers every year, the app, a company buys them? Well, we offered them to teachers and students this year too, and so a lot of them have already went out in that way with the new lease that came in, so, and it, several thousand dollars have been applied to that account, so it's been a good thing, so just wanted to mention that. And they have those, you know, Jeff, he'll have, he'll be working all summer, have it all ready to go for the kids. And I think that is all I have, unless you have questions for me?
I have questions about the wind. I know there's regulations, when we buy stuff, and I know some, like when we sell, like, I know the county uses like government sales website or something. So, can I say, we have the, you know, to phrase, can we also have a question about where legally bound to, if anything, for us, for, any bit of the wind?
I think probably what would have to happen is that you can't just, if you're gonna sell it to another entity, like a public entity, then that, you don't have to bid it, but if you're going to turn and sell it to like, you know, the public, I would assume that there would maybe have to be like an auction, or there would, I mean, we can turn around and look into like what legalities we have to go through.
Well, yeah, that's, I would just like you personally, but, you know, if we got this route, or this route, or this route, or what our, what our legal options are, if we, you know, however we choose to go forward.
I wasn't, I pretended the last time that when they did the high school properties, but they auctioned them all.
Yeah, they did. Yeah. They required to.
So not saying that's what we're gonna do.
Yeah, right, I just, I would like to know.
I don't think we can just list it and sell it that way.
Right.
I don't know about that for sure.
I'm not sure on that either, but in general, the way I've ever done, you know, the way things have been handled, like the village, like, it had to be auctioned, it had to.
We're not ready to make any decisions, so that's fine, so just.
I'll just check on that for you, Jeff.
Because it was also a lot of, the old high school property was also a lot of, sold off lots, and then has improved, a lot brought higher prices lots.
Okay, so we're gonna move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items that need to be removed from the consent agenda? All right, so, we have a motion, please?
Move.
Thank you. Second?
Move.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Carrier?
Yes.
Ayden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mazer?
Yes.
And Better?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero. We need to move into minutes and financials, a motion, please.
Motion.
Thank you, Jim. Second?
So.
All right.
All right, I don't have a lot, I just wanted to make a note that, I just lose my mind for the last couple. So anyways, just make a couple notes that I had, I have one here too, but I guess I had three accounts. One for the STEM account, to create a oh-one-nine-nine-zero-zero-four for a STEM account, and that is for Mr. Farrell's project, money flow funnel in and out there. And also, I received a letter from Chris and Mr. Began and Mr. Stevens, and kind of combined, that they wanted to still continue with the clubs, but they wanted to separate out the middle school and high school art club. I don't know what the reason, I mean, I think that they just want to be able to designate and kind of spend money as they see fit, so we've established a new account that way too, and then also for the class of twenty, twenty-one, the incoming freshman class. I did, on the back of the update, there is a, just a little info, I guess, here on initial filing deadlines for income tax, if we would, at the last meeting, we had tried to discuss our deficit spending for next year. So if some, if the income tax is something that we want to proceed forward with this fall, the deadline to file would be July twenty-eighth. I don't know what everyone thinks about, about that.
We're okay to go until May, right?
We'll deficit spend, the only thing is, here's my only concern with May, is that we do it next May, then we have to wait another, you know, six, you know, five, six months before it starts collections. Just throwing it out there.
How much, have you had a chance, Melissa, to look at how much our estimated additional revenue that we generate versus what our deficit spending would be over that period of time?
Well, if we did another three-quarters, like what we've done right now, I think like this year, we generated like seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So, I mean, if you did another three-quarters, that's about what, you know what I mean? You just had a double.
You projected deficit.
Yes, a one-point-one, almost one-point-one million deficit next year, I think is what I, like choked on it. So.
So one-point-one million, and then?
Because if you did one percent, then you're gonna be at about a million, roughly a million. Yeah, if you did a one-point-two-five, then you're at, you know, almost like one-point-two million, so.
You know, I kind of like to see maybe some projections, maybe at our next meeting, so, okay, if we want a quarter percent, if we want half, if we want three-quarter, because I mean, I can't imagine we'd ever even think about one, but, you know, just to kind of see, okay, this was a five-year forecast, if we put it on this year, if we wait till next year, and, you know, just kind of get an idea of where we're gonna be looking at.
Yeah, well, probably if you get quite a chance, I don't know how your, how your schedule is, I said, if we can even get that to us ahead of time, so we can kind of think and study that before the July meeting a little bit, and kind of let us digest that a little bit, and see, because, yeah, we won't take a hard look at that. 4.1, roughly 750.
I just hate to eat into what savings we do have. You know what I mean? Or what carryover we generally tend to have. I just, I hate to eat into that too much, because then you're gonna have, like I said, you'll wait.
Right, somewhere you have to try to make that back up.
Right.
Yeah, because I didn't realize that it was gonna be still roughly a 250K deficit on top of that yet, so that makes, we gotta study that.
Yeah, there's a lot of things, I think, that we need to kind of, I mean, we're gonna have to tighten our belts and figure out, you know, where we can, I don't want to say cut, but where, what we can cut and what, where we continue forward with where we're going and, and, but, you know, financially, we have to figure out, if we're only receiving this much money and we're gonna deficit spend, we need to be able to make ourselves whole, break even at least. So, that's where, you know what I mean? That's where I have to see.
Yeah, I think we'd want to at least get ourselves to break even.
Yeah.
We would not want to, I agree with you, we would not want to deficit spend.
No.
For a very long period of time.
You know, I think there's things, you know, transportation, we're gonna forego purchasing a bus this year, but I think, but, you know, transportation is something that we need to, you know, there's things that we do need, things that the kids need.
But at some time, we still have to, we still have to update our fleet and get it, or otherwise we'll become like we was in the early 90s or so, you know, everything was held back, held back, held back, and it costs so much to.
Right. And you don't want like antique, 2.5 year old buses.
We'll stay ahead of the curve, not behind the curve.
You're gonna kick the can down the road too far. But, you know, now, if we put it on November, it'd be the following year.
Start collecting in January.
January, okay, and then you'd get, okay.
And probably, we probably gonna have a serious discussion about that if we, if that's the amount of, we're looking between 750K and 1.1 million from generation to actual deficit. Yeah, we probably ought to take a hard look at that for November. Originally, I thought May wasn't an issue, but you kind of made me think a little differently.
The following year, wasn't the deficit spending less than what it was next year? No?
I don't, I don't think so. It, it's just kind of, it's a triple effect.
Yeah, I thought there was a different one, but.
Your wages always go up, your wages constantly are going up. So, the negotiated agreement, I mean, you have to take each year, even though it's like a 2.5% increase with indexing and all that, it's, it's more than.
Well, wage is going up, state funding's going down, federal funding's going down.
Which I did have another note here that, we went to a meeting on Monday, and I told Keith, I was like, did you see our ESC bill? I mean, our ESC bill for this year, the final estimate, or the final billing was 700,000 to 828 dollars. So, that was, I mean, we were projecting, what they had told us at mid-year was 672. So, I mean, by the time the end of the year was, we're at over 700,000 dollars. It's like our expenditures keep going up.
We talked about this at the last meeting.
I think a lot of it has to do with, you know, you have the kids at the IEC, you have, it's numbers, a lot of it's numbers.
All right.
Our special ed, I mean, it's not, we just have more special ed numbers.
300,000. Okay. So, Melissa, just to make sure that you, because if we want to get this done, we have to decide by, yeah, we have to decide at our next meeting.
Right.
And so, if you can get that information out.
Yes.
We'll do that.
I would also like, because I don't disagree with you guys at all, but I think I'm a little less confident about getting it passed than you are. So, what else is going on in November, I mean, versus May? I would like to look at that, like what other things are on the ballot?
What's on the ballot to throw people out?
Exactly, versus May? Because those things do matter.
May's typically a pretty light, light month.
Right.
I don't know if there's an advantage one way or another, but.
I don't know whether, but I would, I would like that information possibly to.
Yeah, I can, I'll see if I can contact the election board and see what else they have on the ballot.
If we wait till May, what if that collect then, January?
Yeah, we'd have to wait.
It always starts till January.
Yeah, so if you wait.
So, you go full year, 1.1 million.
So, I guess, you know, that's why I'm kind of, I got this and I was like, oh, the filing deadline, and I, I do think it's a serious topic, and I think it's something that we kind of need to, to look at.
I'd also like to know when, I recall the actual date that we gave back in the quarters, how long it's actually physically been.
It'll be four years this fall as well.
I wanna say, was it 2014?
No, 13?
Was it 13?
My closest 14, since I was here. I wasn't in here.
Like, maybe it was approved in 13, so maybe it was approved in 13, and then you were here when the vote was taken. You were January 14. I'll double check the date that it was.
Travis, I was his first full year, and I was half year that year. We started the same year technically, and that's what happened.
Okay. Thought we didn't really ask for the renewal of the.
Right.
So, I was 13, so it would've been 14 when we stopped collection.
Right.
So, it'd be a full three, so it'd be a full three years. If, if we pivoted on the November and it came back, it'd be a full three years.
Right.
Not, not, I thought it happened in spring of 14, and we didn't feel the effects until the year 15, and so I don't.
That might be.
It was, it was the same time that we were, yeah, it was the fall.
We'll find out.
I'll find out, I'll get you a date. Other than that, I don't think I really have.
I feel like, how do you talk that, like? Is there any?
Well, I keep going.
Well.
See, your P-values are going down.
Income, plenty of establishment of the following fund, the STEM account, high school art club, class of 2021, which she has already discussed. Recommend the board approve participation in the following federal funding projects for fiscal year 2018, establish accounts and appropriate funds as indicated below for high schools that work. Title I, the IDEA B and ESC E, and Title II. Recommend the board approve the following petty cash and cash fund account for fiscal year 2018. The cafeteria, 60 dollars, elementary, 50 dollars, treasurer, 2,150 dollars, athletic checking, 3,000 dollars, and high school, 125 dollars. Approve final changes to fiscal year 2018 permanent appropriations as presented. Approve the following fiscal year 2018 temporary appropriations, 80% of prior year's expenses for all funds except state and federal grants. Accept the following donations, 105 dollars from Kuanis for the art department, 250 dollars from the wholesale house for girls' basketball, 250 dollars from Community Moreon Hospital for grade six Hicksville Shake, 358 dollars and 40 cents from Hicksville Beautification Committee for the land lab, 400 dollars from Hicksville Athletic Boosters for track, 500 dollars from Hicksville Athletic Boosters for girls' basketball, 500 dollars from Paul and Denise Overmeyer for the scholarship in memory of Noah Carrickson, 650 dollars from the Hicksville Bank for grade six Hicksville Shake. Any discussion?
No.
Roll, oh. Yeah, it's just making calls. All those people that just. Yeah, step up to the plate. Roll call, please.
Carrier?
Yes.
Aiden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mazer?
Yes.
And Better?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero. Motion, please, to move on to the resolution. I'll second it. So, Danny first, Mindo second. Board resolution for final appropriations, be it resolved by the Board of Education in the Hicksville Exempt Village School District of Defiance County, Ohio, that to provide for the current expenses and other expenditures of said Board of Education during the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2017, the following sums be and the same are hereby set aside and appropriated for the several purposes for which expenditures are to be made and during said fiscal year. Discussion. All right, roll call, please.
Carrier? Yes. Aiden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mazer?
Yes.
And Better?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero. Moving on to the next resolution, I will set out a motion. You need a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Craig. Board resolution for temporary appropriations, be it resolved by the Board of Education in the Hicksville Exempt Village School District of Defiance County, Ohio, that to provide for the current expenses and other expenditures of said Board of Education during the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2018, the following sums be and the same are hereby set aside and appropriated for the several purposes for which expenditures are to be made and during said fiscal year. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Carrier?
Yes.
Aiden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mazer?
Yes.
And Better?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero. Thank you, Jen.
I'll second.
Thank you, Craig. It is hereby certified that the Hicksville Exempt Village School District has sufficient funds to meet the contract obligation payment or expenditure for the above. It has, in effect, for the remainder of the fiscal year and the succeeding fiscal year, the authorization to levy taxes which, when combined with the estimated revenue from all other sources available to the district at the time of certification, are sufficient to provide operating revenues necessary to enable the district to maintain all personnel, programs, and services essential to the provision of an adequate educational program on all the days set forth in its adopted school calendar for the current fiscal year and for a number of days in the succeeding fiscal year equal to the number of days instruction that was held or is scheduled for the current fiscal year, except that if the above expenditure is for a contract. This certification shall cover the term of the contract or the current fiscal year plus the two immediately succeeding fiscal years, whichever period of years is greater. Discussion.
Brief.
Roll call, please.
Sir?
Yes.
Aiden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mazer?
Yes.
And Better?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero. Moving on to employment of certified staff, a motion, please.
I'll move. Go ahead, Craig, I'll second.
Craig first, Danny second. Thank you, gentlemen. Recommend to accept, I don't have to read this, Mr. Misty. Recommend to accept the resignation from Travis Leasty as elementary principal effective July 31st, 2017. Travis, we understand, we are sad, but happy for you family-wise.
I want a sincere thanks. I'm glad, I feel very grateful to have worked where I have the last four years, with the people I've worked with. Big thanks, Keith, for, I guess, hiring me first, and Claudia, that first year was tremendous and helped me get started, and the admin team that I've worked with, the board that I'm fortunate to work with, the teaching staff, the support staff, kids, it's just been, it's been tremendous four years. I mean, I look back on four years, and I can't believe much stuff leaves granted in four years here. It's been a productive four years, so, I mean, I, I'm really sorry to go, I'm really excited about my next opportunity. When I got here four years ago, I never foresaw it. I told Keith, I, I'm here for 17 years, you know? You never know, I mean, I, God's got a plan for you, don't make a question, I guess, but, you know, I feel good about where things are here right now. I feel really good about the group of people that are gonna keep working with Hicksville's kids. I said this at, I say this every opportunity I get, especially our awards assemblies this spring, and I said, the, the community of Hicksville and the kids of Hicksville are so fortunate to have the group of people here every day working with their kids, that it was just, I can't, there aren't enough superlatives to describe the way I respect the people here in this building, so. It's been a good four years, you know, it's a small road, we're 10, 10 miles apart, I'll see you plenty, I'm sure, but thanks, it's been tremendous, so.
Thanks, Travis.
Yeah, hate to see you go, but Antwerp's getting a winner, and you're gonna make everything better, and that helps the community too, so congratulations on that.
That makes a little lag here.
Thank you for everything you did.
Thank you.
I expect you to be very hard on Mr. Billman and Mr. Zuber.
That's, that's one.
Okay. I got to experience your leadership firsthand. You were always professional, yet personal, great with our kids. As a teacher, you always encouraged us to think out of the box, and then you took those ideas and made it even better than we had thought, raised it to a different level. Thank you.
That means a lot. You know, it's funny, I joke with Mindo when I, when I hired in here, knowing that she, I student taught with Mindo in 96, which is, that's a few years ago now, but I said, one of the things I was most nervous about coming here was, was me, you know, living up to Mindo's expectations. I was nervous about that, because I respect her, so it was, it was good, she was, she was great to work for and great to work with, so.
They're awesome.
Not a, not a positive, not a negative word to say about Hicksville and my experience, yes, for sure.
Same goes for you, and I definitely know you're gonna make everything better when you go.
Thanks.
Stay in touch.
Roll call, please.
Carrier?
Yes.
Aiden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mazer?
Yes.
And Better?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
And if we could've all voted no, it would've made a difference.
Amen. Okay, moving on. Thank you, Jen. Second?
Thank you, Mindo.
Recommend to accept the resignation from Alicia Nye as co-cheerleading advisor, grade seven to eight, at the conclusion of the 2016-2017 school year. Recommend to accept the resignation from Sharon Sweet as co-coronation advisor at the conclusion of the 2016-2017 school year. Recommend to approve Andrew Lawrence as summer credit recovery instructor to provide a maximum of 72 hours of credit recovery through the digital learning center at current hourly rate. Sessions will be held on the following dates from 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM, June 12th through June 16th, June 19th through June 22nd, July 10th through July 14th, and July 17th through July 20th. Recommend issuing a one-year limited contract to Paul Overmeyer as classroom teacher with seven years' experience at a master's degree for the 2017-2018 school year. This will be for 30% of a workday and shall be for the position of co-athletic director. Recommend to approve the following supplemental contracts for the 2017-2018 school year, Dave Blue for head girls' track coach, Mike Blue Hicksville Initiative House Leader, Chris Gagian Hicksville Initiative House Leader, Joy Geiger Hicksville Initiative House Leader, Jeff Pot, co-athletic director, co-ticket manager, Andrew Lawrence head softball coach, Jay Mast, co-project more advisor, Paul Overmeyer, co-athletic director, co-ticket manager, Paul Payne head boys' track coach, Missy Roth cheerleader advisor, nine through 12, Joy Stevenson Hicksville Initiative House Leader, and recommend to approve the following as a volunteer for the 2017-2018 school year, pending certification and background check, Mike Altman for cross-country. Discussion?
A lot of the supplemental positions, the coaching and things like that, we didn't hear back from anybody that they didn't want those again. So, it seems like often, in the past, we've approved them after the thing has already started. So, I said, let's just put them on, and if it changes, if the code changes or something, we only have that one change to make. So, that's why a lot of that stuff's on there now, trying to get ahead of that game.
And that's a good idea. Roll call, please.
Carrier?
Yes.
Aiden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mazer?
Yes.
Better?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Mazer?
Yes.
And Better?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0. I need a motion, please.
I'll move.
Thank you, Danny, in a second.
I'll second.
Thank you. Recommend to approve the following supplemental contract for the 2017-2018 school year. Tim Schach, head baseball coach. Roll call, please.
Carrier?
Yes.
Iden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mazer?
Abstaining.
And Better?
Yes.
Motion passes 4-0 with one abstention. Employment of classified staff, a motion, please.
I'll move.
Thank you, Craig.
I'll second.
Thank you, Jen. Recommend to accept the resignation from Amy Stabler as co-cheerleading advisor to grade seven to eight at the conclusion of the 2016-2017 school year. Recommend to accept the resignation from Miss Yoder as co-cheerleading assistant at the conclusion of the 2016-2017 school year. Recommend to approve the following supplemental contracts for the 2017-2018 school year, pending certification and background check. Nikki Miller as co-cheerleading assistant, Eddie Tunis, junior high assistant football coach, and Sandy Zuber as co-project more advisor. Recommend to approve the following as volunteers for the 2017-2018 school year, pending certification and background check. Rich Lysit for cross-country campaign for cross-country, and Zach Witty for football. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Carrier?
Yes.
Iden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mazer?
Yes.
And Better?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0. Services and agreements. Motion, please. Jen, in. Danny, second. Thank you. Recommend to approve the following rate for high school summer 2017 classes, $60 per credit for summer credit recovery through the Hicksville Digital Learning Center per course. Recommend to approve a service agreement with Northwest Ohio Juvenile Detention Training and Rehabilitation Center from July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2018. Amount of service is $38 per student, per weekday, for students assigned to the Juvenile Detention and Training Rehabilitation Center. And an addendum.
That was just the easier place to vote.
I'm so sorry.
Turn the page and do the addendum.
Yeah, we'll do the addendum next. Recommend to approve a service agreement with Central Ohio Medical Review for the purpose of district procuring the medical review services and related therapy referrals for students who are undergoing evaluation for or receiving any of the related services of occupational, physical, or speech-language therapies or audiology services as a component of their IEP service plan. The term of the agreement shall be for one year commencing July 1st, 2017 and ending June 30th, 2018. The cost of said services will be $25 per medical review, $50 per medical review for students with two therapies, and 75 per medical review for students with three therapies. Recommend to approve an MOU by and between Defiance College and Hicksville Exempt Village Schools from July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2018, for the hosting of education intern and practicum students. Recommend to approve resolution to continue membership in the Ohio High School Athletic Association for the 2017-2018 school year. Recommend to approve a service agreement with Defiance County Board of Developmental Disabilities to provide educational services from August 2017 to June 2018. The district will be assessed $3,000 per student for the excess cost. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Carrier?
Yes.
Iden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mazer?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0. The addendum to appointment of classified staff, a motion, please. I'll move. Thank you, Dan. I'll second. Thank you, Jen. Recommend to approve Molly Shay as a classified substitute for the remainder of the 2016-2017 school year. Roll call, please.
Carrier?
Yes.
Iden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mazer?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0. Moving on to other business, motion, please.
I'll move.
Thank you, Craig.
Sure.
Thank you, Dan. Recommend to approve the cross-country team to attend an overnight trip to Brethren, Michigan, from July 25th, 2017 to July 27th, 2017, for a team camp. Recommend to approve the middle school, high school staff handbook for the 2017-2018 school year. Recommend to approve the middle school, high school athletic code handbook for the 2017-2018 school year. Recommend to approve the participation in the national school breakfast lunch program and the Title I and Title II programs for the 2017-2018 school year. Recommend to approve the activity advisor and coach handbook for the 2017-2018 school year. Recommend to approve the athletic ticket price for the 2017-2018 school year. Recommend to approve the following new and revised Board of Education bylaws and policies, which we have all looked over. Recommend to approve the following new and revised Board of Education guidelines, again, we have those over. Recommend to extend recognition and appreciation to Community Memorial Hospital for providing 74 physicals to prospective athletes on Wednesday, May 17th, 2017. Any discussion?
Hey, I'm real quick.
Yes.
The approval of the middle school, high school staff handbook, I thought that was going to be removed.
You said that you had it up, that it was ready.
Yeah, because we've done a copy.
Yeah, I came and talked to you guys about it, but then she said, no, you said it was ready, so, you want to pull it?
No. I just made sure, I thought it would be off anyway, we did have it down. I was making sure they had the most updated version.
Are we good then?
Yeah, we're good.
All right.
It's up to you.
I think let's pull it.
Yeah, it'd be safe, if you're not 100% sure.
I'd like to pull it, because we're going to have a July meeting anyhow, so I'd like to pull it.
I know we worked on it, we finished it the other day, and Anita didn't come down. I just wanted to make sure that they had the right ones.
I was going to understand, and then we're going to pull it to begin with, and then